Good evening, welcome to the May twenty-four, twenty-two regular La Mirada City Council meeting. Please stand and join me in the invocation by Pastor Jim Clark from Grace Evangelico Free Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by VFW Pulse nine-one-four-eight.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, first and foremost, tonight we just pause in silence with our friends from Uvalde, Texas. Father, we pray for the comfort and peace that can only come from you to those grieving there. And in doing so, though, we ask your protection upon our own first responders, police, the sheriffs, and our fire department. May you protect us from ever having such an incident in our community. And Lord, we pray and you ask your blessing upon this meeting of the City Council of La Mirada. We pray that you watch over these proceedings and give wisdom to the council members and the city staff as they lead and guide through the decisions they will make. We ask that your presence be felt among us tonight, in particular, as we grieve with our friends in Texas. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please place the flag. Civilians, place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform, attention. Present arms. Ready? Begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Order. Arm. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Angelo. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Serega.
Here.
Mayor Potemotero.
Here.
Mayor Eng.
Here. We'll begin with Agenda Item five-point-one, presentation of awards to La Mirada Community Foundation Scholarship recipients. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Since two thousand and five, the Community Foundation has awarded nearly eighty thousand dollars to eighty-nine graduating seniors from La Mirada and other local high schools. This year, the Foundation is offering the Bob Jenkins Community Service Scholarship and a STEM Scholarship for students planning to study science, technology, engineering, and mathematics in college. The Bob Jenkins Scholarship is available to students who have provided significant community service, reside here in La Mirada, and have applied to an accredited college. Applicants are required to complete an essay on the value of community service and their involvement in the La Mirada community. The STEM Scholarship is available to students majoring in business, computer and information systems, engineering, mathematics, engineering technology, natural resources and conservation, and physical sciences. Students must reside in La Mirada and have applied to an accredited college. Applicants are required to complete an essay on how they are going to affect the world through their degree in a STEM discipline. I'd like to invite up our Community Foundation President, John Groats, who will be reading the names of the recipients, and I believe is Kathy Alvarez here as well? Yes, Kathy, to help hand out the scholarship checks. John?
Thank you. This year, the Foundation received many wonderful applications from the youth of La Mirada. It was a very tough decision to decide because all of the candidates were so worthy, but it's so good to see so much community involvement by our youth. I said the Bob Jenkins Community Service Scholarship is in memory of Bob Jenkins. He was a longtime member of the La Mirada Community Foundation. His daughter Joyce and her husband Randy are here tonight. Our first award winner tonight is Amber Chang. Amber, come on up. Amber has volunteered countless hours at many nonprofit organizations such as Good Samaritan Food Pantry and Warm Up America, where she learned how to crochet blankets and scarves to help those in need during the winter. She is also a member of La Mirada High School's Matador Scholar Association. She plans to attend either Cal State Long Beach or UC Santa Barbara and major in biology.
Did you say you want to call them one after the time?
Yes.
Okay. Did you say you want to crochet? You didn't?
Crochet, yes.
Really? Oh, wow. So you're a social entrepreneur. So I would invest in her, wouldn't you?
Yeah. I definitely would. You know what? Just like Tom's, you buy one, and then twenty percent goes to people in need. We got you. We have you. So congratulations.
Oh, this is worth more than that. This is pride. That's his pride. Congratulations.
Is Melissa Dang in attendance? Come on up, please. Melissa Dang has volunteered with La Mirada High School's Matador Scholar Association and served as president of Rotary's Interact Club. She also volunteered in a Friend for Everyone Club, where she volunteered many hours to plan game days and preparing baskets for the graduating seniors in the special education program at La Mirada High. Melissa also volunteered in the city's Leaders in Training Program. She plans to attend UC Davis and major in psychology.
Wow. You must be incredibly patient. I can know a lot of people, I would pay them to be your friend. If they need friends, they just go on social media and rent. So thank you for that. Now I know who to turn them to. They need a friend.
Is Marina Saffold in attendance?
Yes.
Okay. Alex Santiago.
Marina.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marina, come on. Marina has volunteered as a member of La Mirada High School's Matador Scholar Association, Art Club, and the Calculus Club. She also volunteered in the city's Youth and Government Program. She plans to attend either Cornell to study human development or cognitive neuroscience at Brown. Congratulations.
Quite a choice. So what does that mean, something in neuroscience? I don't know what that means.
Basically, it's the study of how neurons send messages in our brain, influence how we think and interact with our world.
Okay. Thank you.
The next Jenkins Award winner is Alex Santiago. Alex has volunteered as a member of La Mirada High School's Matador Scholar Association and the Calculus Club. He also volunteered in the city's Youth and Government Program. He plans to attend the University of Pennsylvania and pursue a career in political science. Coming for your job.
Our seats are for you. You say anything? You can?
I'm just ready to go.
Taylor has dedicated many hours to volunteering in Relay for Life, a charity that's particularly dear to Bob Jenkins' family, Meals on Wheels, another of his favorite charities, and is a volunteer aide for the special needs students at Fullerton Free Church. She also volunteered at La Cerna High School's Government Program and is vice president of Delta New Women's Empowerment Club. Taylor plans to attend Azusa Pacific University and major in Liberal Studies and Humanities. Congratulations.
You volunteered at La Cerna High School for the Government Program?
Yes.
Yeah, student government.
Do you have anything at La Mirada High School? I'm just wondering.
I'm not exactly sure. Yeah. Like a little Cerna high school.
For the Cerna.
Oh, I see. God.
All local high schools are eligible as long as the student resides in La Mirada.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Our final Jenkins Award winner is Natalie Zuniga. Natalie has volunteered in the city's Youth and Government Program and Youth Council. She also volunteered as a member of La Mirada High School's Link Crew and is an altar server at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church. She plans to study biochemistry and molecular biology at Marquette University. Dress warm now.
I have a picture on the spot. What does bio, what's the difference between biochem and molecular biology? Is that double major or the same?
It's the same major. They just kind of hop it into one.
So you find out how chemistry passes work to play the molecular function?
Congratulations, and dress warm now. Now for our two STEM Scholarship winners. The funding for the STEM Scholarships is graciously provided by SoCal Edison. We appreciate their support and their support of our youth and our community. The first winner of the STEM Scholarship is Jaden Fugie. Jaden is a member of La Mirada High School's Matador Scholar Association and Link Crew. She also volunteered at the L.A. Food Bank, where she helped to distribute meals to those in need. She plans to attend UC Davis and major in animal science. Congratulations.
Future vet? You're going to be a vet?
Yeah.
So I figure my dog is relatively young, six years, eight years by telling you to not. But I'll look you up.
Hannah has volunteered as a member of La Mirada High School's Biomedical Club and is currently co-president. She volunteers at Presbyterian Downey Hospital as a volunteer lead. She is also currently attending West Coast EMT School. Hannah plans to attend Cerritos Community College and major in biology, and then transfer to a university to pursue her biotech degree. Congratulations.
I graduated a couple weeks after I graduate La Mirada, and then I take my certificate.
Amazing. You're really, really amazing.
Yes, very amazing.
And you're going to be looking at major in?
I was hoping to major in biotechnology.
Oh, that's the future. I agree. Honestly, you know, yeah, security, biotech, biosecurity, I think that's the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations to our winners. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again. I do believe, I've been here seven years, that this is probably one of the most accomplished group of students I've ever seen. I mean, pretty amazing. Great job. Thank you to the La Mirada Community Foundation. Next, we have public comment. Anyone wishing to address council, please step forward and state your name.
Good evening, council. Jack Miranda, active member of our community. I come in peace. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We share it with many other causes, Asian Pacific Islander Month, Straight Talk Counseling. I come representing Straight Talk Counseling. I'm a secretary of the board. We have a vast reach, Orange County, here in La Mirada, a presence, and we have case in point with this tragedy that happened just this afternoon. I would want our council, I would hope our council would consider mental health as part of our public safety reach. We would want to include the challenges of mental health that in May, this is our awareness. Straight Talk Counseling, Helpline Youth Counseling, The Whole Child, all those are part of our community services. Oliver and his team are well aware of the services that we need to provide, and so I'm here just to, a case in point, what's been happening, the violence in Buffalo, New York, the hate. We know that mental illness is not a crime. When you act out in hate and in racial violence, that crosses the line. Where do we provide prevention? Where do we provide intervention, not just enforcement? And so I'm imploring our council to consider mental health as part of our public safety. If you did not know, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's has a MET team, Mental Health Evaluation Team. They're actually housed here. I didn't know that until last week. Thank you, Mary Seifert. Thank you, Ann Herrickson, for bringing that to our awareness, that these are intervention efforts. So I appreciate that, speaking to them. We need to remember homelessness is not a crime. So in fairness to our sergeant, we keep pointing to Sergeant Rodriguez every time there's a family that comes up here and is concerned about the safety in their, in their community. This is part of that. If I could hand this over to our assistant, this is what Straight Talk is doing. Please, Ann, if you could get that to our, to our council, I'd appreciate that. Straight Talk is offering group therapy for free. This is costly. Our therapists deserve a quality, a quality stipend, quality compensation. And so please, council, would we consider mental health, the challenges that we have when we face? Eighteen children dead. Pastor Jim brought up the great point that it never happened in the community of La Mirada, and there's some insight as to what Straight Talk represents beyond, it's called beyond, that we don't just serve La Mirada, that we serve Norwalk and La Habra, South Whittier. That's called beyond. And two weeks ago, Pastor David Newman, Neighborhood Life Church, came up and implored us to love our neighbor. And so that's what this is about. Thank you for what we do with Straight Talk. Let me ask you to consider that our, that our expenditure on public safety would include and embrace our mental health efforts. Thank you very much.
Good evening, La Mirada. My name is Raymond Fernandez, and before I say anything else, I'd like to at least acknowledge and say my condolences with respect to what happened today in Texas and for all of us that grieve. Again, I was not prepared to say anything, it just came to fruition in my mind that I should. Congratulations to all the folks here that got scholarships. Congratulations to all of you. I am from La Mirada High School myself, class of nineteen ninety-three, decades ago, obviously. You may know a very good friend of mine who is the varsity coach, Michael Machete. So it's a small world here, and I, of course, graduated with a two-point-one, unlike you guys who probably have over a four-point-oh. So great expectations for you all. Another reason I'm here is to also implore you all, whether it's the students or the students of the parents. I currently am the president of the La Mirada Rotary Club, and I'd like to, whether the ones here or the ones that are watching on camera, if you have any questions or desire to be a part of the La Mirada Rotary Club, I know there was somebody here from Rotary Act, so thank you for that as well, I implore you to please reach out to myself, whether it be Facebook or the website, lamiradaroteryclub.com, et cetera. I just want to just read a few things real quick. With respect to Rotary, is our four-way test, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it be goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? And on another note, too, if you are going into college, something like this may look well, perhaps, on something you may be needing to submit or on your resume, your portfolio, et cetera. So I am here at the corner of the room if you have any questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Raymond? Raymond, what's a scale, two-point-one out of two-point-oh back then?
I'm not quite sure. I wasn't, couldn't get past three out of three either.
I just want to make sure. I think it was on a scale of two-point-oh then, I think. Anyone else wishing to talk about the scale? Reading the scale? No? With that, public comment is now closed. Next, we have Agenda Item seven-point-one, appointment to the La Mirada Senior Council. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, vacancies currently exist on the senior council advisory body. Residents Mary Hall and Lori Chimbrough applied to serve on senior council. Both were interviewed by city staff, senior council chairperson Peggy Roman, and vice-chair Martha Vieira on April fourth. Mary Hall expressed an interest in serving her community as a representative of Lake Park. She has been a resident of La Mirada since nineteen sixty. She retired as a buyer at International Paper after thirty-eight years. Ms. Hall currently serves on the Board of Directors at Lake Park La Mirada and is a participant of the city's Emergency Operations Center trainings. Lori Chimbrough also expressed an interest in serving her community as an alternate member for Somerset Glen. She is a retired preschool teacher of forty-seven years and a resident of La Mirada since twenty-ten. In addition, she volunteers for Meals on Wheels and is an active participant of the city's Volunteer in Action Program. With that, it is recommended the city council appoint Mary Hall and Lori Chimbrough to the La Mirada Senior Council for terms ending in June twenty-twenty-three.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions, comments? I'll move by Item seven-point-one. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Are they here? Is Mary and Lori, Mary, oh, there you are. Whereas Mary's in the front, in the back, yeah. Okay. Just kind of wondering if they're here.
We'll do the other half.
Oh, okay. Great. Just one question. Lori expressing interest, does that mean she's on the fence or she's in? You're in, right?
I'm in.
Okay. Just want to make sure, I'm sure, I see you guys around the neighborhood when I walk at night, especially Lori. You know, I'm not sure if you've seen you with my dog Ninja.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a little dog, but barks like a ninja.
Not really.
I walk around the neighborhood every night with my wife, so I'm sure I've seen you somewhere, but thank you for your interest to serve, and your willingness to serve, really appreciate that. I think it's definitely, we have positions open on senior council, so thank you. With that, roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Serega.
Aye.
Mayor Potemotero.
Aye.
Mayor Eng.
Hi. So I'd like to invite both Mary and Lori to the front of the room to be administered the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm abassed to enter.
On which I'm.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I know this, Ann kind of slowed everything down and was very, very considerate, whereas when he was with Angelo, she just went like three, four sentences. I kind of noticed that, so thank you, Ann, for that. Next, we have reappointments to the Public Safety and Traffic Commission and the senior council. Senior council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the provisions of the resolution establishing advisory bodies, a member is automatically removed if that member is absent from more than twenty-five percent of the prior eight meetings. A routine review of attendance records indicates that Public Safety and Traffic Commissioner John Ojessikova and senior council member Larry McCollum have missed three meetings. As a result of these absences, they were automatically removed from the Public Safety and Traffic Commission and senior council, respectively. However, both have expressed interest to be reappointed. So with that, it is recommended the council reappoint John Ojessikova to the Public Safety and Traffic Commission for a term expiring in June twenty-twenty-four, and reappoint Larry McCollum to the senior council for a term expiring in June twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions or comment?
Move Item seven-point-two.
Okay, who have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Serega.
Aye.
Mayor Potemotero.
Aye.
Mayor Eng.
Aye. We have eight-point-one through eight-point-five is the next Agenda Item on Consent Calendar. Any questions or comments with staff? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion, move staff.
We have a motion?
Second.
For second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Serega.
Aye.
Mayor Potemotero.
Aye.
Mayor Eng.
Aye. Next, we have City Council reports and announcements. We'll start with Councilman Steve DeRusse.
Thank you, Mayor Eng. Yesterday, I was in a Zoom meeting with City Manager Jeff Pointon and others, the I-five consortium, the I-five and the widening of the Valley View Bridge is by eighty-nine percent complete. In a couple of weeks, they'll be widening, they'll be opening up some new lanes on the freeway, so that will probably ease our congestion and move it on down towards Downey in Commerce, where it will remain for quite a while. So that's about that. Everything should be completed by, by the time summer is, is over unless something unforeseen happens. And that concludes my announcements. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeRusse. Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, I was at La Mirada High School for Matador Matters. It's a TED Talk that was made up by our innovative mayor here and introduced. I want to thank him for that because this was the inaugural one, and I think the Rotary Club, Raymond, there you are back there, Rotary Club gave seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for prize money, and Mayor Eng even put in some of his own money for prize money. So I want to thank all you guys for collaborating on that. That was a great event, and hopefully that'll keep going on for years to come. Saturday morning, I was at the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, and I want to thank Sergeant Rodriguez for holding the torch during that, and thank you for everybody who showed up that was walking for a good cause, and hopefully we'll see that come back every year to splough. And finally, on Sunday, I was at the Symphony, and I saw a eleven-year-old Lawrence Dinner play the Steinway piano Bach in D minor, and he played it perfectly. And it was amazing to see, he was supposed to play this about two years ago when he was nine, but he played it when he was eleven, and the kid's just amazing. He's a prodigy on the, on the piano. I guess he plays other things as well, but he even puts together symphonies. But congrats to Larry Dinner. Great job, and it was a great show. If you guys ever get a chance, go to the Symphony. It's free, free tickets, but you can also donate because they got to pay their, their musicians as well. So that is my report, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Councilman Serega?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About two weeks ago, I was in attendance at Contract Cities. It was great seeing a lot of the council members from local cities, neighboring cities that we haven't seen for about two years because of COVID. Beyond that, though, two major things that came from that, that seminar. First one is housing. There appears to be a division kind of forming within Contract Cities in terms of housing. A lot of individuals are beginning to ask the state to actually do more to reduce local control in terms of housing, and I was surprised to actually see that at Contract Cities because it usually went the other way, but I think there was a statement made where if they don't approve it, just go over their heads. So that was kind of unfortunate that they took that approach, and it seems to be growing a lot bigger as a movement. So I know the state has a large budget surplus this year, and they're definitely looking at some housing elements, which they can use some of that money for. And secondly was the drought that we're currently in and some big water issues that are coming up. There's districts in the northern part of the county, Wesley, Calabasas, that area, where they're actually going in and they're putting water flow regulators on private homes, and they're decreasing the water flow by upwards of eighty percent on some of these homes that are noncompliant with their quotas. And I think Governor Newsom just came out this week, basically asking residents to reduce I think we spent well over $20 billion on water issues. I don't think they've built a single reservoir in that time. They're actually looking to do away with one of the dams up in the northern part of the state because of some salmon migration issues. And to top, top all that off, they appear to be asking for more money and higher water rates going forward. So I don't know what the, the solution is, but it seems like their only answer to every problem that seems to come up is just throw more money at it. But they haven't seen any real results with the money that they've had thus far. So I foresee water becoming another big issue in the next year to two years. And don't be surprised if even suburban water comes back and says, we need, you know, to raise the rates because of inflation, because of the drought, because of so on. And it just seemed like it was one of those seminars where it was a lot of bad news despite the fact that we hadn't seen each other in a long time. But these are very, I would say, important issues that will affect a lot of residents, if not all residents, within our city and just the state as a whole. So it's kind of a somber event, but at the same time, it's a reality that we're going to be faced with in the next couple of years. So I'm hoping that we can get some more local individuals on these boards. There are certain commissions that are coming up for election, if you will. And being able to appoint some friendly, I would say, local elected officials to, to those boards might go a long way in helping in local control. And cities like La Mirada and even, you know, neighboring cities Norwalk, Whittier, La Habra would hopefully get involved and actually be a voice in those rooms. Otherwise, they will run roughshod over all local municipalities. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sarega. MPT Voltero. Sounds familiar.
I, I, I kind of forget. That was something else. We're not going to have a fight up here, no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, a few announcements. Last Friday, I was able, I was invited and attended the East Whittier School District Above and Beyond Awards Luncheon that was held at the, at their facility just outside, other, other side of the Star Center. It was, even though I was the only La Mirada representative there, we were outnumbered by Whittier and they tried, they tried to bully us, but we fought back pretty good. We, we got them good. Mayor Joe Vinatieri tried to put some swipes out there. I swiped right back from the crowd. Trust me, I'm not going to let anybody talk smack about La Mirada when I'm sitting in the crowd.
Is this basketball?
Actually, Joe was saying that Whittier has the finest athletic program in the southern region. I said, you must forget about La Mirada because we're, we're better than you guys. Put it out in front of everyone. It was, it was all fun and just, but it was really fantastic to see, those of you who don't know, the 5th district where I represent, our children in that area go to the Whittier schools. So we have representation there from Granada and Scott Elementary. We had some young men and women there who was even some, recognized for some phenomenal work they've been doing and teachers and so forth. So I was very proud to be there and be a part of that and, and just to represent La Mirada to the, the best of our ability and our children who go to those, those schools. Also on Saturday, I would, again with Councilman Lewis, we attended the Special Olympics Torch Run. Again, Oscar, thank you. There was, I, my hat's off to the, the CEO of Norwalk to come up with that idea. It was, it was a really good, out-of-the-box fundraiser, if you would. And I'm very proud that La Mirada City did accommodate them to whatever they needed, we, we made sure they, they had it. I want to give a congratulations to our very own Chief O of across the street of Biola, who's going to be sworn in as the 64th president of an international association of campus law enforcement administrators. That's, that's quite an accomplishment and it's, it's going to be very proud to have someone like that man of his, his reputation and his work ethic to represent not only the, the campus law enforcement community internationally, but the fact that he has the name Biola after him with him in La Mirada. So we're definitely, thanks to dynamic people like that within our community, we're not only put on the national map, on the global map of who and what we are as a community. That's all. Oh, the one thing, too. I was glad to see Taylor, Taylor up there from, from La Cerna because she's president of Delta New, the Women's Empowerment Club. And that's the club my, my daughter started when she was at La Cerna. She was the first president. So I'm going to let my daughter know that little club that she started is still going strong. Very proud of that. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, MPT. Let's start with BT from the hills have I, the hills are alive to in the heights.
It's true.
So let's talk about the first one, the hills.
Hills are alive. Well, they're still alive somewhere, but no longer with us because they, they finished in Folsom and had a production run in Folsom. It was very well received and now the show is finally closed. So we look ahead to In the Heights, opening on June 4th. But before that, this week, we've got two shows. We've got Dave Brubeck, who is a great jazz legend. His sons will be here on Thursday and they're going to perform a tribute to their dad. And then on Friday, we've got a tribute to John Denver with, with John Denver's original musical director. And the La Mirada Symphony is playing it. In fact, they're rehearsing it right now across the way and with the original orchestrations. So it's going to be a, a great show and it's almost sold out.
Thank you, BT. Just congratulations on Sound of Music again. That was actually, everybody I talked to says it's one of the best shows they've ever seen. So congratulations again. I want to also thank Rotary Club. Now, as we try to build our stronger community infrastructure, partnering with different nonprofit and organizations, you know, thank you for stepping forward and helping us put the TED Talk on. I think it was well received. Some of the, the students were amazing. I thought somebody was talking. I really do hope that it is a, it becomes an annual event. I really, I really hope so. Finally, I just want to say plumbing has been 100% repaired in my house. All the holes in the walls are patched. John Lewis can no longer scare me with rats coming out of those holes. So now I can sleep well. But that's why I got to say I'm back in business. With that, I just want to, let's see, city attorney announcement.
No announcements.
City manager?
Just a couple of quick announcements. So as a reminder, this Monday is our Memorial Day event at the Olive Lawn Cemetery. So the city has partnered with the VFW Post 9148 and a new group, the La Mirada Veterans Coordinating Council, to put together a meaningful program this year. Begins at 10 o'clock over there, go an hour or so, but a lot of unique tributes and features. So just a reminder to the community to come out and support really a, a nice event. And then also, Sunday was our Passholder Preview Day at Buccaneer Bay. Believe it or not, summer is almost here. The bay for, hey, councilmember Lewis and Mayor Portemontero.[1757.13]